Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, May 26, 2015, regular meeting of Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you're all here with us tonight. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call, please?
Mr. Baruch.
Here.
Ms. Conley. Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Oliver is late. She's at her daughter's awards ceremony. Mr. Snyder. Mr. Z.
Here.
And Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Madam Clerk, I think your microphone may be having issues.
Okay, so do we have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Oaths of office to new board and commission members, looks like we have at least one, maybe two, depending on whether she is on a board, I'm talking about your daughter. But you want to come up with your dad? Huh? Want to come on up and see your dad get sworn in?
Hi. Thank you. I'm just going to, you're just going to repeat after me? I, Charles Anderson.
I, Charles Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Architectural Advisory Board.
As a member of the Architectural Advisory Board.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
It is done. Thank you.
Congratulations. Why don't you come on, why don't you come on forward?
Sign yes.
Bring your daughter up here, maybe we can get a picture of you, the rest of, with you and council.
Very much.
Come on up, Mr. Anderson. Bring your little daughter up.
Appreciate your service. Thank you much. Yeah, we'll see you later. Bye-bye.
Okey-dokey. Let's see, what else? Are there any other members who need to be sworn in tonight? Anyone else on any boards and commissions? Nope? Okay. Let's go ahead to public comments. I do have one speaker slip. Is there only one person in the audience who's going to be speaking? That's you, Gary? Is there any other speaker slip? Who is going to be speaking? Anyone else?
No, sir.
All right, why don't you come on forward, Mr. Laporta? Welcome to you. Thank you for coming out. Long time no see.
Yeah, I know. Thank you for attending the Chamber Mixer, for those of you who were there. And I'm working off the perspiration. My name's Gary Laporta, 130 Chanel Terrace. Thank you, Your Honors. Yesterday, the nation paused to honor those who died in the armed forces defending our country. Two years ago, two weeks ago, getting ahead of myself, the law enforcement community honored those who died protecting us here at home. Part of this event was the 2015 Police Unity Tour, in which 1,900 bicycle riders pedaled into the District of Columbia, raising $1.9 million for the Law Enforcement Memorial Fund. 130 of those riders rode the three-day, 250-mile route from Richmond to Charlottesville, to Warrington, and finally to DC. This course is both a beautiful ride through our Commonwealth's horse and wine country, as well as a grueling, hilly test of endurance. With your approval, I would like to recognize three members of our Falls Church Police Department that made that, that participated in that beautiful but grueling ride, and ask them to come forward for a photo with council. Community Service Officer James Brooks, Lieutenant Joseph Carter, and our Chief of Police Mary Gavin, with your permission.
Of course, come on forward. Thank you all. Congratulations. Thank you all. Congratulations. It's quite an accomplishment. Excuse me? Yeah, we'll try to get this straightened out. Mr. Shields, it sounds like the microphone for public speakers is not working, nor is the one for the city clerk. Is there someone, maybe you could take a look?
Is it working?
I'll check the.
We've got some new arrivals. Were either of you in the back row planning on speaking tonight? Okay, great. Well, thanks for coming out. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak tonight? Okay. Why don't we then go on to the summary of written comments? Are there any written comments, Madam Clerk?
How do I sound?
You're okay.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you. Summary of written comments. The Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation forwarded comments on the proposed Mason Row project, as did the tree commission submitted some updated comments on the project. And, whoa. Hey, okay. The Chamber of Commerce provided a letter about the proposed Mason Row project, asking for finalized information from the developer, so the city might in turn provide fiscal impact numbers about the project. We had a letter from Elizabeth Bass of 322 Grove Avenue. She wrote about the proposed Mason Row project, stating that the proposed building is too tall at 85 feet, the garbage bay should not face the bike trail, another hotel is not needed in Falls Church, and that she is concerned with the project's impact on traffic. Rebecca La Toraca, 205 Grove Avenue, wrote with concerns about the proposed Mason Row project, including the scale en massing, the location of the trash bay area facing Grove Avenue, and traffic impact. She said that she is concerned that a movie theater will create late-night noise in her neighborhood, and that West End Park will need more patrols because of increased foot traffic. She expressed a desire for a development that will create and maintain community. And there was a letter from Dorothea Potter Typell, 809 West Broad Street. She wrote to express concern about the proposed Mason Row project.
Thank you. Before we move on to council requests, we have a few new arrivals in the audience. If you'd like to speak, now is the time for public comment, if you'd like to make any comment. Okay. Are there any council requests? Does any member of council have a request? Okay. Why don't we go on then to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. First, just a quick note of thanks for everybody who came to Falls Church for the Memorial Day celebration. That is their most important holiday, we believe, for our nation, and certainly is their most important for the city of Falls Church. And it requires an incredible amount of teamwork for us to pull it off each year with Public Works, or Police Department, or Office of Communications, and I think probably first and foremost, our Wreckin' Parks Department, coordinating all the activities. And it takes a lot of volunteers as well, our veterans of foreign wars, our volunteer fire department, and all of the others who contribute to the event. And so I want to thank everybody for their participation, and thank the council for marching in the parade and representing us all. A couple of things that I'd like to report as well. First, on the Southwest Street roadbed reconstruction project. We have been getting notices out to residents of Southwest Street to let them know about the project and what is coming. And we are now broadening that outreach to include surrounding neighborhoods adjacent to Southwest Street who will be impacted by potential traffic detours into their neighborhoods and other impacts that they will experience during the project. And I wanted to speak briefly about what the project is and how we're working to get information out about it. In short, this is unlike your typical repaving project. It will be a complete reconstruction of the street. What's on the street from Southwest Street, from Broad Street, all the way to the city line, is essentially two inches of asphalt right on Virginia clay, on the native soil. And because of that, that's not a standard roadbed, because of that, the road degrades generally after about three years of any repaving, and by year six or seven, really needs, is in, fully degraded and needs to be replaced. If it's rebuilt to standard, what you will get is 10 to 15 years before it begins to degrade, and just need a normal mill and repave. And so it's investment in our infrastructure, it will get, have a return for our taxpayers, and provide a much more reliable and smooth travel service for the public. But the construction period will be highly disruptive, and it will take a matter of months, through the summer months, to complete the project. We will need to close Southwest Street in blocks as we proceed through. We've been working through all sorts of different configurations about how to manage traffic during this period of time. But for their regional messaging, our message is, this road is closed, you need to find an alternate route, local traffic only. And then we'll handle the local traffic through various detours. We will also endeavor to maintain access to homes on Southwest Street throughout the construction period. There may be, if you need to come in during construction periods, there might be a delay of being able to access your home. But then after, a manageable delay, five to 10-minute delay is what we would be targeting as the longest delay. And then after hours, when construction work is not happening, access would occur over a gravel path essentially to each person's home. And we'll break it into sort of small chunks, block by block, so each section will take about two weeks to complete. And so for each of those blocks, sections that are under construction, it will be quite disruptive. And so we're working with its neighbors to make sure they have the information, so they can plan ahead. We anticipate that this work will go on all the way through the summer months, so starting in mid-June, it'll go through July and August, and targeted completion date before school starts in September. We will be having a neighborhood meeting next week on the street, so that we can talk with neighbors about impacts, face-to-face, go over the plan with them. Message boards are up now, but you'll see the bigger orange message boards going up soon to really inform the traveling public that this, they need to find alternate routes while we do this road rebuilding. Lastly, wanted to report on the Mason Row project. The developer has informed us that they're targeting June 19th as their date to provide a revised submittal that would have new elevations, it would have a complete set of voluntary concessions, a transportation demand management program, shadow studies, the long list of things that we've requested. And so June 19th is the target date for that. Obviously, then, the July 13th date where second reading was scheduled several weeks ago, that date will need to be deferred, and we're working on when that actual deferral date will be. The developer has requested that that be deferred, date be deferred to your meeting in August. We believe that in order to get the proper review of the resubmittal, September is the timeframe that is practical for us to be able to work through the changes that they will be proposing. We will get word out publicly once we've nailed down that schedule, but I think the most immediate thing for people to know is that the resubmittal will occur on June 19th, and that second reading will not be requested on July 13th, and we'll schedule a deferral date from there. That's my report for tonight. Be happy to answer any questions on this or other items.
Mr. Baruch, and then Ms. Conley.
So, two points about the work that's being done on the repaving. So we're going to be a mapper, or some sort that the city's going to put out that shows the incremental, and for the public to be able to see sort of front page on the city's website?
There will be, and the map is really the easiest way to see it. We're working through with the contractor now exactly what those increments will be, and there's been some back and forth on that. And so we're pushing to get that map out, but it is not yet complete. So as soon as it is, we will get that information out.
Thank you. And if you can share that mapping schedule, et cetera, whatever you have with the council, just in case, you know, we start getting questions, just so it's a wide distribution of it.
Yeah. And we've also contacted Fairfax County and the Providence Supervisor's Office, just, there will be impacts obviously in Fairfax County as well, and so they're in the loop on the project as well.
Now, are we going to also put out re, the detour signs, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. We can just stay on top of that with the contractors, since this is going to be a moving project, it sounds like, from block by block? And then two, on Mason Row, I understand that there's going to be a resubmission on the 19th, and the 13th is going to be a deferral, but where it sounds like we'll still have a hearing, since that was set already. Is that right?
We can talk about that in terms of the council. The council could keep the hearing if you would like to do so, and then just defer action after that. Or the council could simply defer it, and defer the whole matter off the agenda. We could talk about which way you'd prefer to handle that.
I would suggest that citizen input's needed, so my suggestion would be to keep it as a hearing day, understanding that we'll likely defer the item, but still keep it, since that's when it was advertised. And at least we'll be able to get some public comment, at least on the submission, since... Mr. Shields, will the actual submission be public, assuming that it's delivered to the city on the 19th?
Yes, we will post it as soon as we get it. That's been our practice with these applications, to get it up on the web, you know, as we receive it. And we can also, we've tentatively scheduled, we kind of need to lay out, sort of get consensus on the schedule going forward. But the developer could give a presentation to the city council at your meeting on June 22nd. But we can talk about that in the context of the council, other council items that you have. But the goal would be to get information out as quickly as possible on the resubmittal.
Yeah, I'd like to see what they give on the 19th, and just kind of take it from there. But I certainly want to disseminate the information as quickly and as widely as possible.
Okay. Yeah, I stand by the fact that I'd like to give the most amount of opportunity for the public to comment on it, and if we already have that as a day, unless there's other pressing business, I'd like to at least be able to have a hearing on it. Which gets me to the second point. Do we, and again, I know the legal answer to this, because we've been around this a couple times, that this, there wouldn't have to necessarily be a restart to first reading? Is that...
I'll let...
But this one's a little bit complicated, since we've got like, I think the last time we looked at it, there's multiple applications, including land use, comp plan amendments, and two SEs.
Yes, but I believe that the one item that requires, that would require a first and second reading is the ordinance, and that's the rezoning. And so the question is whether the rezoning, or whether the, yes, the rezonings are different from what was given first reading before. Generally, that has not been changing, and these other items don't, won't require a new first reading. And because the rezonings don't change, because the property is mostly already B2, I believe what it needs to be, there will not need to be a new first reading. But you could always choose to do one, even though it's not required by law.
And we have no idea how substantially different this application may or may not be at this point, right, Mr. Shields? I take it?
Yeah, that is correct. But I think, you know, typically with an application, after it gets referred out to boards and commissions, there are changes to it. I think that's what's desired, is that there would be changes, and that generally does not trigger a whole new first reading unless there's a, well, even, you know, on zoning matters, you know, even if there is a change through the public process, that doesn't necessarily in of itself trigger a new first reading.
So let me ask you another question on this front. Has staff had an applica, had an opportunity to develop the staff report of whatever version we were on last go-around?
Yes.
Okay. Can you have that staff report shared with council members? Because I don't believe I've seen that. Has that been shared with boards and commissions?
I will, I will get that information to council.
Can you get a note about that? Because part of the frustration I've been hearing is that there was not enough by some boards and commissions to work with, so they felt they couldn't act, and that's coming across even from the chamber letter that we received today. So I'm, I'm just grappling with what exactly has moved, you know, is the developer reacting to comments from whom on this, especially the fact that we didn't have a staff report from the previous application, when the council, at least the majority of the council, we excluded from that, decided to move this forward?
Well, I think the, as the applicant has gone to boards and commissions, very, lots of big things have been in flux from the developer. And I think that we've gotten consistent input from AAB, CACT, Planning Commission, et cetera, that the application is too much in motion, they don't know exactly what it is they're evaluating, and that is the case.
So just so there's no surprises, because I don't believe in surprises, just so my fellow council members know where I'm at, given that this is yet in flux, and given the feedback that I'm receiving from various boards and commissions on an individual basis, and certainly with the chamber letter feeling like they didn't have enough information to really comment on this, I don't see how we kind of move to second reading right off the bat, because I think that removes an opportunity for further public comment between first and second reading. If people are feeling that they can't comment on it yet, there's got, we got to make sure that there's built-in opportunity to do that, however that gets built into the schedule. So I'm going to be expecting that, at least as one council member, to make sure that there is time for that to happen, and for council to have at least some type of work session or a formal meeting, so we can discuss these further, once we get some of that board and commission feedback provided to us. And the developer's going to want to see that there may be further iterations that are needed of this project, just to go forward. So just wanted to make that point clear of what my view about it is, as far as schedule and timing of this project goes.
Ms. Conley?
Slipping back to the Memorial Day Parade, I just really want to single out Amy Maltese, and thank her specifically for the new city council banner that we were able to carry yesterday, which was just beautiful. A great way to welcome people to the parade and start the parade, so I do want to thank her publicly for that. And the other thing that you didn't mention in your report, but I just want to bring up, because I believe this is the last meeting we're going to have before the community visioning event, which is June 6th. Everyone in the community is invited to attend. This is a city and schools community visioning for the parcel of land where George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson are on. It's June 6th from 9:00 to 12:00. It's going to take place in the Mary Ellen Henderson Auditorium. Invitations have gone out to lots and lots of different people. I ask you and urge you to share it with everyone you know in the community, so that we can really get a broad cross-section of the community to talk about their hopes, desires, wishes, and learn about what's possible for that property. To sign up, if you want to sign up for the event, it's www.fccps.org/GMVision, and GMHS Vision. And if you want to just submit comments, it's www.fccps.org/GMSurvey. And both of those are open and easy to submit comments and sign up, and it really is important for all of us that we get a lot of community input on that.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your report on the Southwest Street project. You know, we don't often stand up and wave our arms and seem alarmed and so forth, because that alarms people, but I think we need to do that for this. As you said, it'll be highly, highly disruptive. It's a good thing, this is the kind of infrastructure work that we need to do. Every 50 years or so, you have to put a new slate roof on the house, and now's our time. You mentioned there was going to be a community meeting. I wonder if you'd set the date and time for that yet? I'm just trying to...
The meeting is really intended for the immediate neighborhood, and we're working on the most convenient date for that. I believe it's going to be the week of June 2nd, but we're nailing down that date. And that will be kind of a direct mailing to the people who are immediately impacted by the detour routes and things like that. So it won't be necessarily a broad distribution for that community meeting, but the goal is have it right there on the street, in the neighborhood, answer questions, and go through the game plan for the project.
And you're thinking that would be a mailing, a US mailing, because the first notice that went out was hand-delivered, door-to-door, which is, you know, okay, but some folks don't always check their front doors, and sometimes things get stuck in handles and they blow away, and so forth and so on. So a mailing, I think, would be good. And also, you know, let's do make full use of all the city's electronic devices, Facebook page, I don't know if we can inform the regional traffic, you know, stations that follow things, because we will need people to take alternate routes, I think, in order to help us get through this, at least in the initial stages. Maybe it won't be as bad as we think, but those of us who live on Southwest Street are used to a certain amount of traffic coming up and down, and I think we'll actually, the water project, the water main work has, you know, gone along fine, and everybody lived with that. But it's the people on, you know, Ellison and Fowler and streets that are just not used to having much traffic, who are going to wake up one morning, and all the rush-hour traffic that normally comes down west is going to be parked in front of their house, and that will truly be alarming. So let's do try to get people's attention in a way that we've not usually done for any road project that I can think of here, so that people will not be surprised by that.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there are any other comments, why don't we go on to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
We have TO 1508, and ordinance to amend ordinances 1929 and 30 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues.
Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. This is before the council on first reading. Generally, each year, at this time of the year, we do a budget amendment to make certain adjustments to the current fiscal year budget as we move towards the end of the fiscal year. There are a couple of issues that have, we've been talking about quite a bit over the past several months, that are addressed in this budget amendment. One, funding for Womata. We've, due to higher costs and lower gas tax receipts, there's more local funding that's required for Womata to the tune of $392,000 in FY15. because we will need people to take alternate routes, I think, in order to help us get through this, at least in the initial stages. Maybe it won't be as bad as we think, but those of us who live on Southwest Street are used to a certain amount of traffic coming up and down, and I think we'll actually, the water project, the water main work has, you know, gone along fine, and everybody lived with that. But it's the people on, you know, Ellison and Fowler and streets that are just not used to having much traffic, who are going to wake up one morning, and all the rush-hour traffic that normally comes down west is going to be parked in front of their house, and that, that will truly be alarming. So let's do try to get people's attention in, in a way that we've not usually done for any road project that I can think of here, so that people will not be surprised by that.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there are any other comments, why don't we go on to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
We have TO 1508, and ordinance to amend ordinances 1929 and 30 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues.
Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. This is before the council on first reading. Generally, each year, at this time of the year, we do a budget amendment to make certain adjustments to the current fiscal year budget as we move towards the end of the fiscal year. There are a couple of issues that have, we've been talking about quite a bit over the past several months, that are addressed in this budget amendment. One, funding for Womata. We've, due to higher costs and lower gas tax receipts, there's more local funding that's required for Womata to the tune of $392,000 in FY15, and we're proposing to make, to deploy savings that we've already realized in FY15 due to vacancies and other, underspending in other parts of, of the budget to be used for that purpose. We've also been talking about revenues, and we believe that while local tax revenues are coming in below our forecasts, and we've talked about those numbers, between $300,000 and $350,000, if you include all revenues, we believe, which includes building permit fees, other, other revenues that the city receives that are not local tax-driven, we believe that revenues actually will meet the target, because some of those other areas there are ahead of what our budget forecasts are. So we will continue to monitor that. If there are shortfalls on the revenue side, we believe that they will all be manageable, and we will give a year-end report on that to the council after the books are closed. And there also is discussion at the work session of the funding for the Mount Daniel Elementary School project, funding for lead certification, or lead commissioning for that project, and I believe Councilmember Dan Z will provide a report on information that he's gathered over the past week on, on that. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions on the budget amendment. Those are some of the, the bigger policy issues in it, and there's a good number of details in it as well.
Before we get to Mr. Z, Mary Beth Connolly, you're the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. Do you have anything to add to what we've heard just now?
No, I don't. Mr. Shields did a nice job going through it, well, I guess I can say the Budget and Finance Committee reviewed it, and I think, Mr. Shields, I'm sure the country have done a good job of explaining that most of the expenses on here are just moving money from one to the other, and the highlights are the ones you talked about.
Okay. Mr. Z, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to report out my findings and determinations on incorporating lead silver into the construction of Mount Daniel Elementary School, as was requested by council last week. At the beginning of this, it seemed like a simple task. The task was to incorporate lead silver for the Mount Daniel Elementary School, which is set to be built to serve our citizens and their children in the coming year. Last fall, the issue was money, $85,000, to be precise. So this new elementary school, the first to be built in the city in over 20 years, be verified by third independent parties to meet the standards by which it is universally recognized for environmental sustainability, a modest recognition of what this city stands for. Now, let's be clear, the lead silver would have done the following things. One, provided energy modeling of the renovated elementary school. Two, would have compelled commissioning, that is to say, testing of all the systems to ensure that it would perform to the standards defined by the modeling, and it is common knowledge that 15% of the sensors and controls would need to be replaced during commissioning. This investment would have been amortized in less than five years. And lastly, yes, it would have resulted in a plaque on the wall. However, for those to say it's merely a plaque on the wall, let me remind you that had the project been submitted for approval in June of 2016, Fairfax County would have demanded that the commission would have been performed, regardless of whether certification was pursued or not. The certification initiative would have been that which would have allowed us to be current. The third-party certification would have ensured that this elementary school would perform as needed for the next many generations of our school-aged children, a facility that could meet expectations of what technology brings us today. So let me say again, at the beginning of this, it seemed like a simple task. Requirements for funds were met with an impassioned outpouring of citizens in November of 2014, and equally impassioned group of high school students forwarded a petition to city council, all of whom said, please give us this lead certification. Please give us a facility that is certified to work as expected when it opens its doors. At the same session, city council, the sense of city council was to find a way to provide the funds and to alert the school of the sentiment. As requested by city council, I had discussion with the school board, the school superintendent, and the school's contractors last week. The meeting was nine to one. At the conclusion of the discussion, I must admit failure. I was not able to convince any of those at the conference call that it was the right thing to do, nor that it was still achievable. There were multitude reasons why it could not be done. The conversation shifted from an issue of funds, which has now been identified by the city for the benefit of the citizens, to one of, for lack of a better word, a possibility of performance, whereas some might say it would impose a major inconvenience. The conversation now shifted from one of funding, which would have been well within the leadership capability of school board to ensure that certification occurred to the discussion of how it would now have the potential to impact the already tight schedule of construction. Now, I need to tell you that prior to this conversation, I had a conversation with discussions with the green building manager of a joint jurisdiction, which is renowned for bringing up lead facilities, as well as the architect of a lead-planted facility that recently opened in another nearby jurisdiction, and they both said it was non-possible, and in fact should be fairly easy to move Mount Daniel Elementary School to being able to attain the lead silver certification. So after much discussion, it became apparent that a no-to-lead contingent would prevail, as we are all aware, is not within the ability of city council to be able to compel performance from other elected officials if they choose not to believe in the benefits of a lead certification. So, conclusion of my report to the city council, and to the citizens of the city, is that there was a failure to achieve that objective. At the appropriate time, I'll move to strike the addition of lead silver certification for Mount Daniel, and the budget modification for FY 2015 amended for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Z. I think we've got some questions, maybe some comments. Why don't we start with Mr. Baruch, and then Ms. Oliver, seemed like she had a, did you have a question, Ms. Oliver, as well? Okay, well, at least, let's start with Mr. Baruch.
Since we're on the topic, I want to first talk about the lead certification, and first thank Mr. Z for him engaging on this issue again. I think him and I sort of joined a, what I'd like to term as a partnership, on trying to move some environmental issues, even though I'm not the environmental person, I defer to Mr. Z on that. It's really his area of knowledge and his area of expertise, but something that I do think is very, very important, again, I come at this for a variety of perspectives. I think being green and having green buildings is part of our educational obligation, and it's also a moral obligation that we have. I don't see how we sit here, expect the development community to move on environmental sustainability, on mixed-use and infill projects, but not expect that of the same for city, school buildings, et cetera. It's just not the right thing to do. It's not what we should be teaching our kids, that there has to be equity on what we expect ourselves to put out in our buildings that are city and school buildings, and we expect that of the environmental community and the private sector. So how we don't hold ourselves to the same standards, even though we can say we're still meeting or building to the same standards, but not having it verified through third parties, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I'm deeply, deeply disappointed. This, at first, this was a budget issue, and we built in a mechanism of dealing with that, or at least leaving it on the table. Now we're being told it's a budget issue, but one of timing issue. And again, this is, you know, really peanuts. And, you know, as much as respect that I have from Dr. Jones, there were some comments made that I take very serious issues with, that we're going to create these Hobbesian choices between educating our children or doing the right thing by the environment. And those are not, those are false choices, and I've said that repeatedly, and I say it again tonight. And I don't like being put in those false Hobbesian choices, because they are not valid. We should not be deciding between environmental protection, environmental sustainability, and educating our children. Because as one council member, I will support both every time, and my record has sustained that every time. So let's not keep putting ourselves into these false choices, especially when we're about to undertake community visioning, dealing with the property that was brought into the city to wit the high school. So I hope we're not having this discussion again, but here we are. So this gets me to the point that I raised before, about what the city can do, or the city council can do. Unfortunately, you know, we, or fortunately, the city council's acted on developing a policy for city buildings, but we didn't cover the school sites, et cetera, and sort of left it up to the school board to develop their own policy. They have chosen, for whatever reason, not to. I asked the question of what actions the council could take, whether we could adopt a more unified policy. I don't know if the city attorney's had a chance to look at that issue as of yet, so if she has, you know, I don't want to sort of jeopardize attorney-client materials here, but if, if you can summarize it, or if you haven't had a chance to look at it, Carol, that's, that's fine as well.
Well, I haven't had a specific chance to look at this, but it is fairly clear that the operation and development and building of schools is within the school board's purview, and the city council has fairly limited authority to govern what they do beyond appropriating funds for their budgets.
So let me ask it this way. Can it be tied to budgets that we do on capital improvements?
Well, there's only a couple ways that the Virginia law allows you to appropriate money to the schools. One is an entire lump sum, and the other is in five broad categories. So it probably, it wouldn't allow you to specify exactly what money is used for beyond the broad categories of capital operations, those kinds of things.
So can we do something such as, you know, for allocating money for capital development for, say, a new school, that it be clear that part of that is going to be meeting to a certain building standard?
No, because you get to, I mean, you could refuse to appropriate funds when things aren't going the way you want, but the only way you can appropriate funds is X dollars to be used for capital projects, X dollars to use for operations.
So let me put it out there. I'm going to be bold on this, if you will, and hopefully Mr. Z is going to join me. I, as one council member, right now, I'm going to say, if we don't start meeting some of our moral obligations on environmental sustainability, I will not move forward on projects for the schools. If that's all I've got, as a tool, that's where I'm at. That's how frustrated I am about this issue, and given how it's moved in flux. And this is how important, I think, it is, not just to our students, but to the broader community. And whether it's lead or not, or if it's some other certification process, lead right now may be the only game in town, but that's sort of where I'm at with this issue. We, we need to do something about environmental sustainability. And again, I'm not the green guy on this, but I just think it's, it's a critical issue as we move forward, especially with some of the redevelopment that we're seeing happening in the city, and what we're expecting of the private sector. And what I think we need to do for future generations, environmental issues are going to be a huge issue. I think it's really, really important, especially as we move to the high school, not only for sustainability issues, but also for air quality issues, given the proximity of the school to major transportation hubs, et cetera. There's, you know, obviously, potential air quality issues for our kids that we need to look at, and there are some best practices out there of how to do a more urban type of school, but making sure the infrastructure is there. So, you know, again, my rule of no surprises, that's sort of where I'm at, and that's how frustrated I am and disappointed I am that there has been, you know, I've got a tremendous amount of respect, but it's not about money. It's not about having to pick between educating kids and building to environmental sustainability. It's not about that. Again, my record sustains that. I've been a big supporter of the schools, both as far as what they try to do, as far as education, but making sure that the money is there to meet their needs. So let's just take that at least off the table and, and move forward in a more positive way.
Ms. Connolly?
I'd just like to say to this council that it's actually our fault that this lead didn't happen, because Dr. Jones stood here in November, December, after the referendum, and we had a conversation about when the students came with the, with their petition, and we talked about it, and different people said, yeah, I'd like that, and, but nobody authorized the money to do it. We didn't, as a body, say, okay, it's an $80,000 add-on, here's $80,000. We didn't do that until two weeks ago. So the schools weren't sitting around waiting, or the developer wasn't sitting around waiting for us to come up with $80,000, they were moving forward with the plans. So I think part of it is that we did not act, and we didn't appropriate $80,000 in December to make this happen. And I think we have to keep that in mind, too. If we want to make changes, we have to act. And as Mr. Baruch said, we have to act early so that it actually happens. But we can't lay all this on the school board and say, they didn't do what we said we might want them to do. We didn't give them the money.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Baruch?
Yeah, and, and that may be a fair point, and I think I was one of the council members who was trying to push that envelope to try to get some consensus, but, you know, people may have been less than clear. I think I actually, you know, and I'm not sure whether I suggested that we send something back, and that didn't let it get a lot of gravitas at the time. So I, for one, and maybe others on the council, sort of, were trying to push that envelope to move it further. And again, that was my point tonight, is to send that clear signal, that I will not, you know, vote a certain way, and I hate to kind of put it out there, but I think the community needs to know, at least we're one council member, is on this point, precisely for the reasons that you raised, Ms. Connolly, about, you know, perhaps we weren't less, you know, we were less than clear, and that's why I've sort of asked the questions that I've had legally about what we can do. And again, you know, perhaps other council members, you know, are going to take a firmer stand on this and join me and ask the mayor, or whoever's going to sign that letter, I'm happy to, you know, put my name on it, saying, this is what we're going to be expecting as we move forward in our development, as a council member, and we hold certain limited budgetary hooks. And maybe we do it as individual council members. Maybe Dan Z will be the second person to sign such a letter. And if other council members choose not to, it's, it's on them. But, you know, I'm happy to try to move that forward and try to get more clarity on it, and if it's not for votes, or whatever it may be, you know, let the chips fall where they may. But that's how we speak as a legislative body, and if we didn't do a great job at that, that's a fair point. But I think that there was a placeholder, and maybe that was too squishy. So let's send a clearer message.
Well, thank you for that. I'm more than happy, as you might expect, to sign on, and this might be the appropriate time to, as the city manager and the city attorney, to put together a resolution that we can pass forward to the school board on the heels of this inactivity.
Other comments, questions? I'm going to open this up to the public as well. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this matter? Seen, okay, we have one, Mr. Sharp. Welcome.
Evening, Karen Sharp, member of the school board. Sorry, I missed probably a good portion of this discussion, but I have been trying to follow along, and going back into the last fall period when there was a petition brought to council, and there was discussion among council members, that, the, the fact that there was such a petition, the fact that there was such a discussion, didn't really reach other members of the board until some weeks and maybe months later. And I, I think there was quite a bit of, of concern over preparation of budgets at that point. School board, school board was in the process of giving a guidance to the superintendent on what the budget could, could contain, but there were also a number of uncertainties about how the budget could be formulated in the CIP area regarding buses, in, well, in several areas of, of the budget, that it was, it just wasn't communicated very, very clearly, and, and certainly not very frequently, so that we would have a sufficient dialogue back and forth to help to resolve these issues. And perhaps going forward, a resolution or memorandum of understanding would, would help to get us over this, this kind of hump, and I, as one member, would encourage, encourage that kind of, of initial communication, and then, and then some ongoing dialogue, and right through the, the visioning as well. I, I know that I can't really pinpoint where the communication fell through, but I can, I can tell you that they, that one, one rather amusing, or at least. tell you that one rather amusing, or at least a portion of the miscommunication, was that while the students were bringing their 100 or 200 names before the council, our student representative on the school board knew nothing about the petition and didn't know anything about it until March or April of this year. And so there was, it wasn't just miscommunication between, you know, the formerly elected members of two different bodies, there was, there was a lot of informal lack of communication. And I will say, too, the Environmental Services Council was not really, not really a part of the channel through which some of this was going and probably should be in the future. That's, again, it's just one member's perspective of where I was during this process, and I feel it's unfortunate that we didn't get a better, better system of communication going and a clearer decision, one way or the other. We kind of left it in limbo too long, and now we're, now we're at this point. But going forward, we do have opportunities to be better. I will say that, at least at this point, the schools do occupy two buildings that have lead certification. One is the central office, and the other is the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak tonight? Seeing none, the matter is closed, the public. Are there any other comments? All right, one last, two, let's go with Ms. Oliver.
Sorry, could I just understand the impact of this change on the, on the item vote before us? I know that on page 10, down below line 255, we would need to adjust the Mount Daniel expansion total. Do we know what else needs to be adjusted?
Mr. LaConde has actually prepared an ordinance that would have those, that $80,000 come out, and he can speak to the changes that would be affected.
All right, I'll start from the top. First of all, happy Tuesday. It feels like a Monday. On line 46, 46 through 50, that is being removed. If you go to line 142 through line 150, that's also being removed. If you go to page 10 of 14, about halfway down the page, you'll see Mount Daniel expansion. That new number is $14,600,000. If you go to the total facilities line, that number is $15,352,000. If you go to the very bottom of the page, where it says total general fund, that number And then on page 11 of 14, where it says total sources, that number is $17,572,000. And that's in the FY15 column.
Any questions? Mr. Baruch, then Ms. Connolly, then Ms. Oliver, or Ms. Oliver, if you already have the floor.
I just, I'm sorry, on page...
There was an addition of $4.2 million for contributions. That was a $4.2 million.
Thank you.
Mr. Baruch, then Ms. Connolly?
I'm just wondering if we're getting into some of the details, if you want to get a motion before council as they discuss the specifics of this.
Well, we can do that if people would like. Sure. Is there a motion? Anyone have a motion with respect to this item? Someone has to make the motion. Okay.
I move to adopt. I move, thank you. I move to grant first reading to TO 1508 as amended, and schedule a public hearing at second reading on June 8th, 2015.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that's for discussion purposes. Why don't we go ahead with our questions, and we have something on the table. Mr. Baruch?
Mr. Shields on, and Mr. LaConde, so I'm focusing in on the Womata funds. That's item one. So there's an additional request for nearly $400,000 on that. And that's coming from various departmental transfers, and I believe that generally falls on page three, line 109 and below. So how much of that, I'm just trying to figure out the budget impacts. So it looks like, from my calculations, unless I'm missing something, as far as actual savings, there are C, D, and E, which is 50K from the Commissioner of Revenue's office from vacancies. So that's savings, if you will. And then there's $20,000 from the registrar's office, and $5,000 from the clerk's office. So I take it all those are savings, even though the money could have been used for other things within those departments, but let's just call it savings nonetheless. Is 230 actual savings, or is that just deferred somehow?
That was created because the positions were not filled in FY15, but they will be filled and fully funded in FY16.
So let me, let me ask the question a different way. Of the monies that have been identified there, how much of that, say, you know, the total, which would, you know, roughly equal out to 400K, is going to come back later in one form or another? Because in fact, it's either deferred somehow, or there's other needs that are going to chew up that amount. And I say that because I know that one of the unfunded issues, for example, was new voter machines that are going to need it at some point. And there may be other items like that, so I'm trying to get a clearer picture of, are these savings, or are they just getting deferred for later on because, you know, we're not spending it, but it's going to come back?
They will probably recur in FY16, but as I said before, the items that, that we talked about, particularly item A, is in FY16 budget. The item for the registrar, while he had savings this year, yes, there are on the horizon voting machines that are in need, an unmet need at this point. The contingency reserves, well, we generally try to set aside money for revenue shortfalls. As you should recall, the contingency was roughly $79,000, and we also used council contingency. Typically, council has not used their contingency.
So here's the point that I'm trying to get to. It's a little bit rhetorical, and this is the reason why I wanted to go through this exercise, because I think this is a big issue. It's one that we're going to face, and we know that we faced it in '16, one that I opposed again on the budget. But when we label things as savings, yes, but if we know that there's unmet needs that didn't get met, I mean, money's fungible. So let's not put it out there to the public or to the council, calling it savings, when we know it's going to reoccur, or it showed up in the next budget, which we know at least some of these items have. I just think that there's, you know, it's a, yes, it's savings, but on the other hand, it's going to, you know, come whacky upside the head the next fiscal year, or there's other unmet needs, so it's really not a savings, because we're not doing things with that money. So if we can, you know, as we were putting these ordinances out, and anticipate we're going to see ones in the future, you know, even if it's a footnote saying, you know, this is, there's other various unmet needs in the department that this is taking away from, I think would be a better way of reflecting it and show a little bit more, more accuracy in the language that we're using. I don't think savings quite captures it, because when I think about savings, I think about, well, it's extra money in my pocket, not extra money because, you know, I'm going to have to pay it the next month on my finances, or I'm going to have to somehow deal with it with other spending reductions somewhere else. So I just think, you know, we just need to be a little bit more crisper on that. I get it, because I'm, you know, we live this, you know, weekly or more than that, but I just think we need to spell that a little bit more clearer.
Ms. Connolly, did you have something?
My question relates to the $80,000 we just struck. Where will that money sit? We came up with $93,100 in developer proffers that are not yet budgeted, so where is that going to sit to be safe, so that when we need to use it for something, we have it? What fund does that, will that be in?
Well, that will be in, it'll be essentially a designated portion of fund balance. Those proffers have to be used for school capital costs. And so the council will appropriate those funds in the future for other school capital needs. Could be the TJ HVAC project, it could be any other school capital project.
Okay, but it'll just sit there until council determines what it will be used for?
That is correct.
Mr. Duncan?
Could I just ask a question? I want to be able to support Mr. Z's request to strike the money for lead certification, but I want to understand clearly, not infer, why I'm doing it. It's not the money. We have the money to do it. The reason that we're striking this is that there would be unacceptable delays in the construction of Mount Daniel if we required lead certification at this point. Is somebody here to tell us that, or is that something that, is that a true fact? Is that why I'm doing this?
I think that's the message that has been sent on, on the project management side for the project, that it would cause delays. I would submit to the council that that message was actually conveyed to the council back in December, that in December it was too late. But the council, you know, those discussions have been ongoing, and I think the council has been very clear in its desire and intent that the certification be, that the lead actually go all the way through commissioning. But I think the schools have been saying, or at least the school superintendent has been saying for months, that it's too late in the process.
Okay, so that what you said and what Ms. Connolly said earlier then are somewhat in agreement, I guess, because that would suggest that we should have known back in December that even if the money could be made available, it was too late from the perspective of the school board at that stage to do lead certification, because they feel they are under extreme time pressure to move the project at a pace that will enable it to open in the fall of 2016? Is that correct? Okay, well, I share Mr. Baruch's disappointment and frustration. I'm not, I'm, I just, it's, the communication issue is puzzling and pathetic. I mean, you know, for us all to be talking about the same thing and in fairly close proximity and not to be, you know, at a better place than we are here now is remarkable. So I'm not sure it is a communications issue. I think it's a, it's a budget dispute, basically. And, you know, I think what, what I've learned, and this process and others, is that, and the community might do well to learn, is that the school board has considerable autonomy in its actions in certain areas. And maybe the city council thought it had more authority than it really did, but in this instance at least, if the schools decide that they have a timetable that they need to meet, then by golly, they're going to meet it. And there's not much we can do to stop it, short of just denying them funding for the entire project, which is not really a very realistic alternative. So as we go forward, I guess, I mean, you know, Mr. Z has worked hard on this and took us on a tour of Wakefield and saw, you know, an amazing school that has, you know, state-of-the-art energy conservation and construction materials use. And I mean, that's the sort of thing I think we aspire to here, and, you know, again, there's nobody from the school board here anymore, but I just hope going forward that on the high school project and the middle school project, that we can get on the same page, because I do think the community wants us to get there. And again, it's not really a resources question at this stage. It's, it's really a matter of staging the project itself. So I'm going to support what Mr. Z has done and what Mr. Z is proposing, and appreciate his efforts to try to get us where we, we want all to be.
Mr. Baruch?
If I can just kind of react to those comments a little bit, you know, I appreciate those comments and those sentiments, Mr. Duncan, but there's no free lunches here. And you and Mr. Tarter had pushed for a flat tax rate. Other members, like Dan Z and I, you know, were thinking about setting aside some level of wiggle room, if you will, on the capital side, to push for, you know, and I wasn't necessarily thinking environmentally at the time, but at least to have those discussions. So we can't sit here and say, you know, absolutely over our dead bodies, are we going to raise the tax rate, et cetera, which is, you know, fair, but there are consequences and miscommunications that result of that, when those messages get heard. So I think that, you know, we need to, as we're developing budgets, be very clear what our principles are. So we can't say, you know, we're not going to raise taxes one iota, period, no matter what the issues are and what's about to confront us, and then sit back and say, you know, we wonder what the misunderstanding were, because I get that. That's how the misunderstandings can happen. I think that's why we heard some of the comments we heard from the superintendent, and again, why I've said, let's not put ourselves in these Hobbesian choices between having to pick between budgets without sort of seeing what's in front of us and what develops. The key is setting the policy discussion up and the framework up, and if one of those is living within certain means, but environmental issues are important, we need to spell that out earlier in the process. But I think it's a little bit difficult for, you know, and perhaps other members feel that way, just to kind of say, you know, we're going to have no budget increases, et cetera, flat out, and then sit back and say, you know, we're going to have environmental sustainability, knowing that there's a bit of tension there. So I just think that we just need to be clear on the policy issues. I just don't think we can have it both ways. And I think some of that confusion may lie in comments that we make during budget season.
Did you have any?
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, budgeting is about making choices. We have tough choices. You know, we can't have everything we want unless we're willing to sock the taxpayers with the ever-increasing tax bill. I just don't think it's necessary, and they elect us to make choices. It's, you know, it's tough business sometimes, and on this one, we didn't get exactly what we wanted, and, you know, so be it. But no, I don't have anything further to say.
All right, let's move on. Unless there's anything else to say, why don't we take a vote? Ms. Oliver, last comment.
I, I just want to come back to the, the revenue item. In the past, where our permit fees have been larger than anticipated, because the permit costs occur over multiple years, we have set aside a portion of those fees and held them in reserve for future expenses. What you're proposing to do in this budget ordinance is to not set aside the larger-than-budgeted permit fees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we are choosing to hope that we can handle future expenses within the budget that we passed without setting aside these funds.
Well, there is still, there are still funds remaining in that reserve sufficient to carry us for a couple of years. What we plan on doing is looking at this item again after the books are closed and see where we are. Right now, we are trying to cover a revenue shortfall. If it turns out that it is covered, we will come back to you with a budget amendment to move some of those excess permit fees into that reserve. But at this point in time, I can't say that we will, we are definitely going to do that. It depends... It depends on how the fees come in. I was told today that we may be receiving some unexpected permit fees, and that may go to help alleviate the revenue shortfall and provide extra money for the reserve. But I don't know that yet.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to roll call vote, unless there's anything else pressing to be said. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. Will you call the next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have TR 15-12, Resolution to Increase the Employees' Contribution to the Virginia Retirement System effective July 1, 2015.
Mr. Shields?
Madam Clerk, members of council, this resolution is the third that the council will have adopted that would impact our constitutional officers and their staff who are members of the Virginia Retirement System. The General Assembly has mandated that all employees in the VRS go to a 5% employee contribution to help fund the retirement system. We have elected to go in 1% increments, and so this increment is to go from 3% of salary to 4% of salary that will be the employees' contribution to the VRS pension fund. Next year, it will be an automatic move from 4% to 5%. So I believe this is the last resolution that the council will be called upon to enact to comply with this federal, with this state mandate.
So this is done pursuant to state legislation?
That is correct. And the wording of the resolution is the template that we get from VRS, and so we tend not to change any of the words in it, and we just adopt it as they have presented it to us.
Not a lot of choice.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any comment? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this matter, seeing none of the matters close to the public? Is there anyone who wishes to make a brief comment about this?
I have several edits I'd like to make to the document.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Seeing none, why don't we go on to a roll call vote if we can? Oh, we have to have a motion. Well, let's try a motion, then we'll have to go on to the vote. We have a motion.
I move to adopt TR 15-12.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Madam Clerk?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Great. Why don't we go on to the consent agenda items?
There are two items on the consent calendar. First is authorization. The city manager, on behalf of the city, to award contract for the trucks to.
Sorry about that. So that is the first item. I would also just note for the record that the three dump trucks that we're replacing are all 1992 or earlier models, and we tend to work our dump trucks pretty hard, particularly because they carry a lot of salt. They've all had beds replaced on them at least once, and their beds are rusting out, and they're fully depreciated. Secondly, the other item on the consent calendar is permission for the city manager to accept a part-time teaching position with a Virginia Tech certificate and local government management program. This is something I've had the pleasure and honor to do for the last three years, and per my contract with the city council, I do ask for your permission to engage in this activity, to teach this class over the summer months.
Okay, thank you. Before we move forward, is there any member of the public that wishes to address these items, seeing none of the matters close to the public? Do we have a motion with respect to the consent agenda? Consent agenda items?
I've got a question on the award for the contract for the trucks. Is that, is there a future budget action that's going to come forward as far as the bond issuance?
There will be a bond resolution that the council will act on in the future as well. And Mr. LaCondre, when would that be?
Right now, we're looking at a September timeframe for that resolution.
Is that an omnibus type of thing, or is it going to be just for the, for this contract?
It's going to be omnibus.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda looks like it's a closed session. So why don't we go ahead? I'll do a motion, move into closed session. Do you have something, Mr. Baruch?
Yeah. Before we do that, just again, just so there's no confusion as we move forward, Carol, I think Dan Z had the thought of putting the environmental issue into a resolution of sorts, which I think would be a clearer way of the council acting, or could be perhaps a letter that individual members sign on to, could be another way of doing it. Just, just again, just so individual members are on the record of where they're at, and there are, as Mr. Duncan pointed out, there are trade-offs. And I made my comments about where I'm at with trade-offs when it comes to environmental sustainability, and others may feel that they can support such a resolution, others may feel that they can't. Whether it's a letter or a resolution, I don't have a preference. So I'll let, Carol, if you can figure out the best way to do that within the confines and not overstepping our bounds, because there are limitations there. But I think based on the discussion, at least, you have a sense of where two members are on these issues, and we can figure out how to best put that out there. And again, my resolution makes sense, because that's how legislative bodies normally act in these issues. But if it's a letter, because we can't, for whatever reason, do it as a body, and we do it as individual council members, or even if we have to do it short of that, as individual citizens, I think that's fair game, however we can express it. Again, I don't want to take any options off the table, understanding that there are some limitations under Virginia law, and I want to respect those limitations, and we'll be looking to you, Carol, on letting us know where those posts are.
I think there's several options available, and we'll go back and consider that and get something to bring forward to you.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take a motion to go into closed session? And we will be coming at a closed session, probably not too, very long from now, but upon a motion made by council member.
Conley?
I got Conley first. And seconded by council member.
Z.
And passed by a vote, a voice vote of city council. Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for the discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, in particular consideration of sale of property at Park Place. Councilmember Baruch?
Yes.
Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder is not here. Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Where would you like to go, Mr. Shields?
I would suggest just right here, in the back steps.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Upon a motion, upon a motion made by council member.
Conley.
And seconded by council member.
Duncan.
And passed by a vote of city council. Council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Baruch? Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder is absent. Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter?
Yes.
Time is 9:40. This is a certification upon a motion made by council member.
Duncan?
Duncan, okay. And seconded by council member.
Conley.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were, was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the city council. Councilmember Baruch? Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder is absent. Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, it is 9:40. Okay. We've got a few more items on the agenda, no big announcement, I'm sorry. But is there any business that's not on the agenda that folks would like to speak about?
I just have one question, and looking at this budget amendment, brought it up in my mind as we were talking about it. Last time we did a budget amendment was like February, maybe? January, February? And we talked about having a first-in list for next year so that we would kind of know what the items were that might be coming up in future budget amendments, items that weren't funded, that we really would like to be funded next. Can that list exist, or does it already exist?
It does exist. It's in the budget book, and there were, there's basically two lists. One was sort of the city managers sorting out of the list that all the department directors provided of the first-in, and then I tried to call them out and prioritize them, which would be my recommendations if funding is, if future funding is available. So in the budget book, that is presented that way.
Okay. So then when we get future budget amendments about optional things? That would be the reference that we're using to look at changes?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Any council?
I guess I just would like to raise that I don't know whether this belongs with government ops, or whether there's a separate committee which doesn't exist, but we have responsibility for managing three staff, and I would like to have a proposal at our next work session about what the process is going to be on the formal review process. I haven't been through it before, and I don't know.
And who is the government ops committee? Just said of.
That's Mr. Duncan and me.
Okay. Would you all like to take a first stab at that?
We can take a first stab at that. We were kind of stymied by that last year, as you remember. We, the process has really eluded me, what that process is or how that should look. So if there's a history of a process that we could build on, that would be very good.
Well, in the past, to my recollection, we've used some surveys. Each member of council did a survey, in other words, completed some information.
But no one was ever able to provide me with a survey.
You couldn't get a copy of it?
Yeah.
I imagine we can, that could be found.
Okay.
Staff also has a copy of their surveys, so we could probably ask staff if we can't put our hands on it quickly. Staff has got a copy of their own surveys. We could just take out the text and ask the questions. No, they were, what staff got before was combined comments from everybody. They also got this very fancy color-coded of individual member comments, so they saw the raw data and they saw the summary of the three staff that we supervise with sort of rankings. So staff's got it. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to show you how it was done in past years. Not that it has to be the same. And it was pretty basic. I mean, as far as a couple of questions and, you know.
That would be quite helpful.
Okay. Any other council member comments? Are there any minutes to approve? Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed tonight? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Pose, abstentions, the ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you.